Hey everybody, council's still in exec session. They're wrapping up right now, so probably about another 10 minutes or so. But I didn't want you to think that they had forgotten about a meeting on a Monday night. So, sit tight, we'll be out here as soon as they wrap up.
Reconvene the Parker Town Council meeting at 7:25 PM.
Questions for the chamber guys?
Good weather for next year?
Absolutely, 85 and perfect weather.
Good for beer drinking.
Good for beer drinking, 82 degrees is actually that.
82 degrees.
That's what they call this.
All right, thank you very much Omar.
Thanks for everything you guys do, thank you.
All right, next up, we have our Downtown Business Alliance updates and I see we have a couple of representatives from the DBA.
Hello, thank you Mayor, thank you Town Council, thanks for having us. So, I'm Chris Schnell, Christopher Schnell, I'm Vice Chair of the Downtown Business Alliance. I live at 15654 East Pine Drop Avenue, Parker, Colorado, 80134. No junk mail, please. So, we are here kind of in force tonight, so everyone that is either a board member or a member of the DBA, please raise your hand. I, myself, again, am the Vice Chair. Currently, the DBA represents about 60 downtown business owners and our mission really, as you all know, is to make downtown Parker a vibrant place to eat, sometimes drink, shop, and be entertained. We're going to be branding ourselves as DowntownParker.com. It's got a better mouth feel than the Downtown Business Alliance of Parker. And of course, it promotes the website, all at the same time. Very handy. What we're doing, what we're up to, we're looking into enhancements in downtown, including Bluetooth speakers on lampposts kind of thing, may help with parade announcements and ambiance music, extending the festoon lights down Main Street, looking at improving in sidewalks, as you guys know, down Pike's Peak, and many more. We've also been, as part of our Adopt a Street program, picking up trash along Pike's Peak. I've had several successful events and cannot believe the amount of trash that there is out there. We have stories, let me tell you, but I'm not going to waste your time with that. One of the cool things we've been doing is putting commercials together for DBA members and we're partnering with Legend High School and some of the visual arts students there using an iPhone and their software and their skills and making some pretty cool one-minute commercials for us. So, look forward to those. We're looking to enhance connectivity between the west end of downtown and over here, the old town part. And to that end, we've got a group of people that have been just doing an amazing job. We're partnering with the Brew Hop Trolley in Longmont, Colorado, and they're actually going to bring one of their trolleys to DTP, that's Downtown Parker.
Didn't you usually do like a dun-ta-dun-ta-dun or something with your hands when you say DTP?
Hey, don't steal my thunder. That is coming, that is so coming. The date is August 23rd, so they're bringing the trolley out, we're going to do a trial run in downtown. Haven't figured out the route yet, but it's August 23rd from 5:00 to 7:00. That will be here. We have a government action committee, maybe that's more of a liaison committee, that is really focused on just telling the DBA members kind of what's going on in government and how it affects downtown. And they've had the wonderful opportunity to meet with both sides regarding these Pine Curve and Pace Center lots that are up for sale. We are currently evaluating what role the DBA will play in that, if any. I mean, we're not a political organization, for sure. So, we're at this point, we don't have anything to report and we don't have anyone to support, no entity to support. One thing though, we found was crystal clear in going through this process, that there are a lot of amazing people on both sides of this issue that are working for the good people of Parker. So, that is awesome. Some notable events, we've had art walks, I'm sure you've all been to them. We've had three held so far, we've got the last one coming up on September 13th. Over 40 or about 40 artists and entertainers were averaging in each one. And it looks like through our very unscientific analysis that between 400 and 600 people are actually coming down to downtown Parker to see the art. Some other cool things that have been going on, weekly bingo and trivia nights at Studio on Main Street, if you guys haven't seen that. Never thought I'd be interested in bingo until I went and now I'm a bingo man. It is so fun. And my kid, my 14-year-old kid loves bingo too now, evidently, so that was good. Also, weekly poker tournaments at Deep Space. We always have weekly live music at the tailgate, sometimes also at Studio at Main Street and at Deep Space Lounge. We have had monthly wine and whiskey tastings at Vine's Wine Bar and Parker Garage respectively. So, just a ton going on downtown, including wine walks, as Omar so eloquently talked about. The Chamber runs those, but they are members of the Downtown Business Alliance as well. Two more of those left, September 27th and October 25th. And I do want to encourage each and every one of you to grab life by the ball. We are having a dodgeball tournament on August 24th in downtown Parker. Form your teams and remember the five D's of dodgeball. Dodge, duck, dip, dive, and dodge.
That was going to be my team name.
Oh, okay. Well, then I can steal yours. So, I also encourage you to grab life by the sack because we're having the first annual cornhole tournament on August 25th from 1 to 4. And that's going to be in the parking lot behind Studio at Main Street. We have 32 teams. The team is sold out in 72 hours, so we were really excited about that. Now, there's no charge to be a spectator, so come on down, bring your friends and family and watch some exciting cornhole going on there. And last but not least, for events is our second annual chili cook-off, will be occurring on October 20th. Public service announcement, the Broncos are not playing that Sunday. They're playing on the Thursday prior, so you're good, come on down and taste some amazing chili. So, if you want to find out about all these events and more, we have our weekly BEAT newsletter where we encourage all of you to find your BEAT in downtown Parker.
There it is.
BEAT stands for Business, Eat and Drink, Art and Theater, and Things to Do. Newsletter comes out every Wednesday. You can do, you can receive that by following us on Facebook, we're at DowntownParker.com. If you like us, then it comes out there, or if you prefer an email in your inbox, go to DowntownParker.com, click on the sign-up link and you are on your way. That is it from us. Any questions for the DBA?
Council, questions for the DBA? I have my cornhole team signed up, you guys going to sign up a team and come?
They're booked up.
Sold out, well, the cornhole sold, I thought the dodgeball was sold out.
Cornhole is sold out for teams, that's right.
Oh, okay, so never mind then.
Yep. But next year, we're probably, this is not official yet, so please keep it on the DL.
Yeah. Hey, Tom, you want to go ahead and pause that Facebook feed?
Are we off the record? Because we might be expanding next year, the field.
Sweet, cool.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, next item up is public comment. So, before we get to public comment, just a couple of quick things for everybody. I want to apologize to everyone, tonight is not the public hearing for the purchase and sale agreement, that's in two weeks, that's on Monday night. Tonight, what happens is, and I'm just, just for clarification, so everyone knows the process, all ordinances in the town of Parker, for the 30-plus years we've been a town, require to, it's called a first reading and a second reading. First reading, which is tonight, only serves the purpose of bringing that ordinance into the public domain, so you all can see it and so they can see it. And then, two weeks later, after you've had an opportunity to read it, dig through it, scrutinize it, and they've done the same, we have a public hearing, which is second reading. Second reading is, there is public comment as well, but it's specific to that item. So, anyone who also wants to come back in two weeks, please do. That is the night of the actual public hearing, where the applicant will give their presentation, in this case, the details of the purchase and sale agreement will be gone through in detail. Public comment will be held, discussion will be held, and then a vote will be taken on the purchase and sale agreement. So, I just wanted to make everyone clear, because I've seen some of the emails from the HOAs and I've seen some of the posts that have said that tonight's decision was to try to sneak it underneath you guys and give a thumbs up or a thumbs down and vote it into place tonight. That's not what's happening tonight. No approval of any purchase and sale agreement is happening tonight. That would potentially happen in two weeks from tonight. So, just so everyone's clear on that. Jeff, did you have something you wanted to do?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like for the Town Attorney to read into the record the ports of the purchase agreement that applied directly to the Citizens Initiative. Further, I'd like you to read into the record the date certain on which the Citizens Initiative signatures need to be turned into the town for validation.
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
So, the purchase and sale agreement that is...
Could you move your mic just a little closer?
The purchase and sale agreement that is on the consent agenda is part of an ordinance under the Town's Charter. In order to approve the sale of land that's owned by the Town of Parker, it has to be approved by Town Council by ordinance. And as the Mayor indicated, it is a two-reading process. First reading is tonight, that's simply an introduction, and the actual decision would be made two weeks from tonight as a part of second reading. And at that point, the public will be allowed to come forward and speak on the merits of the purchase and sale agreement that's in the packet. The purchase and sale agreement that is in the packet has been signed by a prospective purchaser. And the purchase and sale agreement is approximately 34 pages, and that's without referencing exhibits. The buyer has been advised of the initiative and I want to be very clear tonight that the purchase and sale agreement, even if it is approved by Council, two weeks from tonight does not affect the initiative. So, if the buyer buys the property before the initiative is concluded, they buy subject to the initiative and the outcome of that initiative. But, no buyer wants to buy land that may be open space, so as Councilmember Toburg indicated, it is addressed in the purchase and sale agreement. There are several references in the purchase and sale agreement to the initiative. I'm not going to read them all, but I'll give you the paragraph, so you can actually go online and actually view the contract yourself and all the applicable provisions that deal with the initiative. So, the main paragraph is 6.8. It's titled zoning, and it's tough getting old because you've got to use these reading glasses and then you've got to adjust the mic just right, so you can...
I hear you.
So, 6.8, zoning. The parties acknowledge that as the effective date, the property is zone GD Greater Downtown District Historic Center by the Town and will remain so after closing. And buyer must satisfy itself that such zoning permits construction and use of the property improvements contemplated by buyer. Buyer acknowledges that buyer has been informed that a petition initiated by Town residents has been commenced to change zoning of the property to OS Open Space District. It shall be a condition precedent to closing for the benefit of both the buyer and seller that zoning of the property is not changed as the closing date and that as of the closing date, there are no pending resident initiative petitions. Town Council proceedings or pending litigation that would result in a change in zoning of the property after closing and that there is no pending resident initiated referendums challenging the Town Council's ordinance approving this agreement. In the event of a petition or referendum is filed, respect any matter set forth herein. At the buyer's sole option by written notice to seller, the schedule and the outside closing date here and after defined shall be extended on a day-to-day basis, pending the pendency of such petition or referendum, but not during any appeal period or any pendency of any appealable applicable there to. It also appears in sections 8.1, 9.12, 9.13, 9.14, 9.22. Sounds like you're getting your teeth measured between your gums, I'm sorry. 9.23, 9.24. So, it is something that we certainly have acknowledged with the buyer, we have discussed with the buyer. The buyer doesn't want the property if there is a pending initiative and so there would be no closing until after the matters of the initiative are concluded. The date for getting in, the petitions, is October 9th. And then, it goes through a process of the clerk determining whether or not the petitions are sufficient. If the petitions are deemed sufficient, then it will go through a process that may ultimately result in an election.
Just to be clear on that, so the November, the deadline for the November election has already passed. This would be a special election, October 6th is what you said, or October 9th?
So, October 9th is the last date to get the petitions in. And again, it goes through a process to determine if the petitions are sufficient. In other words, do they have the requisite number of signatures by residents of the Town of Parker on those petitions? If they're deemed sufficient, then it goes through a process, but if there is an election, that election probably will not occur until maybe end of December, first quarter of 2020. That will be a special election, that will be an election that the Town will have to fund out of its general fund.
And that's still within the closing period of the property, so if the, if they...
So, the property itself will not close until after all of that is concluded.
Okay, that's what I'm, I wanted it in non-lawyer speak.
Right. And if, if the election results in the residents determining that the property remains as open space, that there'll be no closing.
Okay, okay. All right, so I just wanted to get that clarified, thank you Jeff for clarifying that as well. So, it's time for general public comment. These are for items not on our current agenda, like next week, or in two weeks, excuse me, when we have it, we'll have, for an example, on the close, on the purchase and sale agreement, there will be public comments specific to that at that time as well. There is a three-minute time limit, you can see above me, there's a clock, there's a clock on the back wall as well. I am a huge baseball nut, so in baseball, when you're on the on-deck circle, you're getting ready to come up to bat, this over here is going to be, is our on-deck circle. Since we've got a lot of people here tonight and I want to make sure you guys have an opportunity to speak if you so choose, if, when the, when we open it up for public comment and you have your little slip of paper, I'd like everyone to go ahead and start lining up on this side. And then, I'm going to call each person up one at a time, you'll lead, you'll hand your little slip of paper to Jim or to Carol or to Chris as you're going by. When you come up to the microphone, you'll state your name and address for the record and then that clock is going to start going down. When it gets down to three minutes, even if you're still talking, I'm going to thank you for your time and invite the next person to come up, so we can get through those people. So, that's the way public comment works. We're going to go ahead and open up public comment at 7:42 PM. No action will be taken on these items, because again, these are for items not on our agenda. If anyone is here for public comment, go ahead and start lining up over here and we will start getting going. So ma'am, you're the first one up, you get to come on down. Just like that, yep, hand your little slip of paper to one of these people, all right, you're good to go, come on down. Okay? Just state your name and address, and the microphone's on the side there, you might have to kind of spin it down a little bit.
You need to have a little step.
I know, and it's flexible, you can pull it down if you need to there. All right.
We'll try that. Okay, I'm Susan Fox and I live at 20864 East Lidle Drive, 80138. I recently moved here from a town I lived in for 37 years, and while we lived there, our town grew steadily from 5,000 to over 55,000 population. During the first third of that growth, I was on the Planning Commission for two terms. And I subsequently saw our decision shape the town into the most desirable community in a large suburban area. So, when we've moved to Parker, I looked at it from a planner's viewpoint and I really liked what I saw. You have an abundance of great commercial development, which ensures a good revenue stream for the city and is also very convenient for the residents. There's plentiful open space and you have the Pace Center, something most towns this size only dream about. You have a vibrant downtown with lovely library parks and good pedestrian traffic. I understand that the Town Council's planning on divesting itself of two parcels of land it currently owns. In fact, a first reading of an ordinance to that effect is on the consent agenda tonight. I also understand that there's a petition being circulated to put the decision to sell these parcels on the ballot for the people to decide. I've read the Main Street master plan and see that these parcels are designated as civic institutional on the plan. In light of that zoning and the concern of a significant number of citizens about your decision to sell the crown jewels of downtown land, I would think it would be prudent to reconsider and table it until full public input could be received. It has been in my experience in the local political campaigns I've been involved in that voters properly informed will make the best choice. If your proposal is the wisest, it will prevail. And remember, this property is their property as well as yours. An item of perhaps even greater concern to me on the consent agenda is your Resolution 19-065. I feel this ordinance is specifically designed to limit public input, specifically the 30-minute time limit for public comment during the body of the meeting. This effectively limits the number of speakers to 10, as any comments made at the end of the meeting are pointless, since the action they wish to address will already have been taken. I do not think it is a wise course for the Town Council to try to insulate itself from the citizens, as these two items on the consent agenda seem to indicate and would request that they be removed. They do not reassure me in the least about the openness and transparency in government affairs in the Town of Parker. Please don't abuse your power or betray the trust of those who have elected you. If you don't like to stay up late at night, and I have stayed up past 11 and 12 o'clock many times at meetings, if that doesn't fit your lifestyle, then don't take the position. Please don't let me believe that the Good Old Boy Network is alive and well in Parker. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please. Next up, please. And just to clarify, ma'am, just for your sake, we normally don't, you know, answer back on public comment, general public, the 30-minute time limit does not apply to public hearings. Public hearings, you can have five, six hours of public comment, so that does not apply to that at all.
But does it apply to discussions?
This, the non-actionable items, this, since this isn't about a hearing or anything, the hearings, you all get to speak as much as you want, so, just to clarify. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Smith Young, 16474 Creekview Drive, Parker, Colorado, 80134. And after hearing what she had to say, I don't have much more to say, because it was great. What I have to say is really simple. On a previous Town Council, I kind of addressed the Council with regard to when we were taking grants from HUD, and I was a strong proponent for local governments, and I thought HUD was taking away that. I was really against issues regarding... I was really against issues regarding low-income housing as promoted by the federal government. This is a little bit different. I wouldn't be here if this property were being sold by a private owner. And where I'm really coming from is a strong proponent of property rights. So I think the real issue here is about property rights. In this case, the town council, as a Republican or as a Republic, you represent the voters. So you can make decisions for us, and when, you know, things are complicated, when issues are complicated, that form of government works great. So I think the real issue here is whether to put it on the ballot or not. So I think that's really the issue. When it comes down to the property rights, the question becomes, who are the property owners? In this case, it's the city is the seller, not a private owner. If it were a private owner, I would say, well, if the zoning fits it, and if I were a builder and I conformed to the rights of the zoning, then I have the rights to build. But in this case, when we ask the question about property owners, it comes down, it's a city-owned property, so it comes down to every citizen within the town. So where I'm coming from is making a decision whether it's too complicated and whether you, the town council, needs to make the decision, or whether it's something that the residents and the property owners can really decide on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, please. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Joy Overbeck. My address is 19692 East Mann Creek Drive in Parker. Recently, Parker was found to be one of the best places to live in the country. Part of it was, we have this wonderful small-town ambiance, even though we're over 50,000 people now, and it's very pleasant to live here. It's strollable downtown. When we have huge buildings, we usually put them, like the Walmart and the other giant, Target, the other, you know, buildings that we have, we put them away from downtown. I would submit that you are endangering the very lifestyle that people love about Parker by selling these properties for large developments. We would have more apartments. We'd have more congestion. We have more traffic. Everybody you talk to hates what Parker is becoming. It's becoming a tiny version, a smaller version, and more burgeoning version, actually, day by day, with the apartments and the giant buildings and the strip malls, a version of Denver. We don't want that. That's not why we live here. And so I would submit that this is all about money. We don't have a funding problem here in Parker. I would submit that we have a spending problem. This is a lot of money involved. Altogether, the four different, just three of the different, the largest properties will sell for about $12.5 million. Every year, the three largest properties will bring about $1.5 million in taxes to the town. It's not worth it. It's not worth it. We don't need a big government in Parker with big spending. Everything is kind of lovely the way it is. How are people going to get to a giant building or a cluster of buildings down Main Street at the Parker Curve? How are they going to get there? We just have Main Street, and then we have Somerset Avenue, apparently. I just traversed that avenue, and it goes right through these townhome developments. We can't put a huge street there. We can't put a... Main Street is two lanes, one lane in each direction. Even if you take off the parking, it's not going to be enough. So I would submit, as I say, that we don't need to sacrifice our hometown ambiance to more funding, to more money. We need to preserve Parker. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please. Next up, please. Name and address, please.
20313 Vista Circle, Parker, Colorado 80138.
What was your name, sir?
Tim Carter.
Thank you.
I'd like to address the value differences between the four properties and then the one property of Pine Curve. I know the town put it to a outside source to value these properties, but I think it is the town's responsibility to look at what values came back and why is there such a difference between these. All I can say is, by the differences of the values going across the street, this just reeks of shenanigans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Mary Lou Carter. That was my husband. 20313 Vista Circle, Parker, Colorado 80138.
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous, so hopefully...
Don't be nervous.
I don't pass out.
No, you're good. Don't lock your knees, because we've had that happen, too. Bend your knees and move around a lot while you talk. It's okay.
Okay, thank you. So I must thank the council for meeting ahead of time and having the lawyer address us with the readings of the sale agreement. So thank you. I have a few points to make. I am a transplant. I want to thank everybody in Colorado for welcoming me here. They have been very welcoming, and I would hate for it to change. So I have a few points. My Main Street Project P3 team engaged, in my understanding, 1,217 Parker residents. All I have to say is, really? We have approximately 55,000 people in the town and are required to get five times that amount to put an initiative on the ballot. Such an unfair process. Point two, I have no trust in the town of Parker to oversee any development in the town as you failed the residence of Preston Hills with the height limitation of the apartments on Parker Road. And I'm sorry if I have that incorrect, but that's my understanding. Point three, how are you going to harness the traffic issues this sale will create? There are constant close calls when you walk across Main Street and Pine, when we're using the crosswalks. The speed of these cars are insane. Unsafe to people, unsafe to wildlife. Oh, wait, I got it. More traffic lights. So they can run the red lights. Okay. Point four, are you going to extinguish, relocate the wildlife on the property, similar to the plans you have for the prairie dogs? I've personally seen five to seven deer at a time, two white owls, several bats, coyotes, numerous geese in the winter season, and even a pheasant on Pine Curve. Gorgeous, is all I can say. Point five, the Pine Curve property is too important to put in the hands of six town council members, I apologize, who appear to have lost touch with the community, and I apologize again. I'm guessing me and my friends have talked to more town residents on this topic than you have collectively. If you believe this is in the best interest for all of Parker, put it on the ballot, please, and let all of Parker...
Ma'am, it's your time. Keep going.
Let all of Parker tell you and settle this once and for all through a democratic process. That would be fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address for the record, please.
John Sutherland, 22318 Quail Runway. Good evening. On the front of this building is a statement. The ultimate authority resides in the people alone. Each and every member of the town of Parker, not just a few people elected, not just a few people appointed, some that don't even live in the town of Parker, each and every person who resides in the town of Parker needs to have a say. Put it on the ballot. Why won't you just put it on the ballot? When P3 surveyed just under 2% of the town population, town council then left it up to themselves and some town leadership, remember, many of them do not even live in Parker, to decide what the survey told them. And it was not big-box stores, more apartments and bars, but what town council and some staff want. If you do not allow the people surveyed more options than what the town council and P3 want, you will not get citizens' true thoughts. When you look at the P3 comments, 40% of the comments want to keep open space or park. This is the top group of comments. Why do you not understand what the people are telling you? Picture tells a thousand words. The people of Parker like the bedroom community we currently have, and some of you up there want to destroy it. The citizens of Parker do not want all the unwanted items that come with unchecked growth and some of the tax-hungry town council and town leadership's desire to support their wants, not needs, yes, wants. The town of Parker has a spending problem, not a revenue problem. If they did have a revenue problem, then why not allow Gander Outdoors to come back to Parker and have an outdoor recreation area? Why, we ask? Remember the old store, Gander Mountain, the one that went out of business? The one that many on this current town council gave over $600,000 in tax breaks to? Yes, that one. The town has a trust problem also. Town council and leadership tell the citizens one thing, and then they do another. An example is the apartments by the Methodist Church. The town staff told the developer not to exceed a certain height. The developer did. The town leadership slapped a fine, and the developer did what they wanted. Yes, a trust problem. The town council told citizens, you will love what we are going to do. We can't tell you, but you will love it. Not all citizens like spending $2.2 million and then giving it away. Yes, again, a trust problem. We must let the citizens of Parker decide what they want on Pine Curve, not just a handful of council and leadership, what they might have hidden agendas on. No more traffic in this area, and we demand a public hearing with public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Dale Brinker, 20130 Williamson Drive, up here in Raleigh Downs. Two years ago, we were discussing this Pine Curve property, and it was tabled, and we were told that we would have a chance for more planning, more discussion, something new would come up. It didn't. We are faced with a sale. On the Pine of the Pace Center parking lot, I'm just amazed that that parking lot didn't go with the Pace Center in the first place. It's clearly a public space that people use. They use it for parking. We use it for Parker Days. It's used daily by people, and you want to sell it. You say you might require a developer to share the parking, but it's already full at times, and it's used. You don't need the money. If you get the money, you spend it. And just what was said before, it's a matter of choice, what you balance with it. And I would like to see this go to a vote of the people and see what people would really like. I have been circulating the petitions, and I'm amazed at how positive people are toward the idea of an election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Lily Tang Williams, 11390 Hillary Place, Parker. I know some of you very well. We worked together in the past. You know, I'm Chinese immigrant. I fled Communist China to come to America for my dream. The dream is American dream, including Parker dream. So we raised our three children here, had a dog. I always show people, which house would you like to live in? When is my best apartment in China? Two families share one toilet. And my house in Parker. Everybody say, I want that one. My house in Raleigh Downs. So my question to you is that, how do you serve the people? U.S. Constitution brought me here because I saw a citizen have guaranteed rights. I don't have a master's anymore. I don't have tenure planning anymore from Communist Party to tell me how to live my life. But now, I feel like you are somehow slipping away. I understand you are good people. You have good intentions. You want to generate more money. But you think our life is all about more revenues for the government, more money for pet projects, for more bureaucrats? No, I did not come here for that. I come to small-town Parker to live, to enjoy life, to have my American dream. And I have to fight that every day in my life, for my real American dream, for my children and grandchildren to have. So why hurry to sell? Don't you remember the words on your building? Government of the people, by the people, for the people. So practice that in your daily lives. I saw you are for limited government. How come you're spending more money, want more revenues, want to build more, regardless what people have been telling you in the past? I don't get it. You tell me, A G K me in your native good English, what I'm missing as an immigrant. I'm an American citizen now. I take my rights seriously. I could not stand to protest even in China, get arrested today. But I'm here to talk to you as my representative, one-to-one, at an equal basis. Consider our voices. We pay you salaries. We pay for towns, everything. We pay for everything as taxpayers. This is our land, not just council, government's land. We deserve to be heard. So please reconsider about our initiative and support us. And we can sit down and have coffee, like Joshua suggested to me. I would love to that, because I wasn't part of a master planning. I did not even know about it. Until recently, people constantly remind me, read the master plan. I say, why should I care? You can create it, you can change it, if you truly listen to people. We have a Democrat process here. We have grassroots democracy. That's why differentiate this country, this town, from the country I escaped from. So please, listen to the people, and don't forget, that's your mission, that's your job.
Thank you, Lily. Time's up.
Thank you very much.
Name and address for the record, please.
Dave Usechak, 12713 Buckhorn Creek Street. Good evening, mayor and council. I am addressing you tonight, asking that one or two of you, that ordinance 1.536 that is on for first reading to be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda in order to facilitate discussion on the issues. I realize that the public will have an opportunity to provide their thoughts at a public hearing on second reading, but I feel voters deserve the explanation on the changes to the original listing, changes to asking price, as well as other stipulations, so the public has a better understanding of the contract, so they can formulate support for or against this contract. This sale has created considerable interest from voters and wonder why you have placed issues on the ballot, like extending the term of council and other possible issues, but refuse to ask us to weigh in on the sale of Pine Grove and Pace. Are you afraid of the possible outcome that may hurt your vision or counter your limited polling taken on this development? Like everything, money dictates the decision-making process. But is your vision of downtown what the majority of Parker residents want? You don't know unless you ask. But I am a realist and know that residents' desires fall on deaf ears up there, as demonstrated from past input opposing other developments that have taken place. You follow the money. Give residents an opportunity to be a better understanding prior to moving forward with a done deal.
Thank you, sir. Next up, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Yep, my name's Levante Batizzi. Address is 20315 Vista Circle, Parker, Colorado 80138. I'm going to go off script. I had something written up, but I'm actually going to save some of that for the public hearing. A lot of my elders here have stated things very eloquently, and I'm just going to echo some of those sentiments, and that's that I really don't think that a controversial issue like the sale of the Pine Curve property, which has been brought up and tabled several times, should be a consent agenda item. I understand your explanation that that's the way it's been done historically, and I can kind of appreciate that if I squint my eyes, but in reality, something like this should be, probably have been put on the ballot for a voter decision and for, you know, brought up in town council as discussion and additional planning and things like that. I attended some of the study sessions that were held at the library, and it was basically like, you know, what kind of coffee do you want? I'm like, well, I want tea. Well, do you want your coffee black or with milk or with cream and sugar? I'm like, I want tea. Well, you've got choice A, choice B, choice C, and choice D. Which do you want? I'm like, uh, okay, I see where this is going. So that's, when I'm looking at survey results and this and that and the other, I really, even though I went to as many, I went to some at the library, some at the Pace Center. I put stickies on things. I wrote notes, and I really feel like that just went like right in the round file. So I, as a town citizen, I don't think my voice has been heard at all. And I really think that this, that consent agenda item E should be pulled off and discussed in further detail at future council meetings. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Terry Dodd, 11450 Marlboro Drive. Glad to see that you got the memo to wear a blue shirt tonight.
I don't pit stain out very well on this one, so that's why I wore it.
If you're talking, you can't start the clock on me.
Go ahead.
About half of my notes are gone because of what's been said before. I really share the thought that we do not have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. Now, I'm all for revenue, and I'm certainly for a strong tax base in Parker. I really want to thank the Downtown Business Alliance for reaching out to both the citizens' committees, as well as the town council and town staff, to try to see if there's some kind of common ground here, because I think that's really what should have happened before now. We should have gotten together, we should have really done this. I have to admit that I believe that the My Main Street project, just like a couple of others have described, I believe it failed to really identify what the people really wanted, what the desires of the people is. I mean, frankly, our citizens committee group that's been out circulating petitions has already engaged probably five to six times the amount of people that My Main Street engaged. So if you really want to know what the people think, and when we say a vast majority of the people are against that big commercial development on that property, we're not just guessing or speculating, we've been out there talking to the people. So like, we're finding that three out of four do not want to see this happen the way that the town has presented it and proposed it to be developed. They keep saying, "Well, we don't know what's going to go there yet. How do we know there's going to be apartments?" Well, doesn't the zoning that's on it right now allow for a big-box user and apartments? Haven't you heard two times before, two and a half years ago and before that, that people out here do not want a big-box user or apartments on that property? There needs to be a buffer, to buffer the neighborhoods, the single-family residential neighborhood in there. That property was bought for public facilities, not for commercial development, and it's been changed. And as a result of that, we need to find what the common ground is. We don't need that property to be developed for the downtown to be a vibrant, successful downtown business district. And that's the problem here. The people know that, but for some reason, it's not getting through. So how do we get through? Well, we're here two weeks in advance because I'm a developer, and I know what the developer's going to have to go through as far as investigating, as far as due diligence on that property. And believe me, there's some risk involved, and I don't think that's fair. I believe that this needs to be taken off of the consent agenda, and it needs to, you give the people the opportunity to vote on this, and then whatever they vote on, you won't get a battle.
I gave you a few extra seconds there to finish out, since you asked me a question. Thanks, Terry. Next up, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Roche, 11425 East Regency Court, Parker. First of all, I think I'm the 11th speaker, is that right? So if you pass the matter that you have on the consent agenda, you've just closed off general comment. So first of all, I think that's a really bad idea, and in view of openness, I think you should not pass that portion of that bill. I am here because I too believe that Pine Curve is so important that it should not, and the citizens have such a vested interest in it, that it should not be on a consent agenda. It should be discussed twice in detail so that everyone has an opportunity to be heard and to shift opinions. The way it may work next week is you'll come to the meeting, you'll publicly, you'll discuss it in executive session, you'll come out here, they'll make presentations, and you'll vote. And you'll listen to the public just before you vote. But I don't think that's adequate, considering this topic and the history of the property. I also think that, and I don't like to do this, but I'm going to. Someone at the, when you, the night you signed the sales agreement, made the comment, "We've done our due diligence." I don't think you have done your due diligence on Pine Curve, simply because you didn't allow the citizens the option of open space. And that same night, it was also positioned, the extreme is open space. I've talked to hundreds of people, maybe 1,000 people, in collecting signatures, and I would think that probably 99, Terry said three out of four, my experience is 99 to 1. At least, most of them believe that it should be open space, but more than that, all of them believe that citizens should have a say in this, and it's too important not to, for the citizens to vote on. And personally, it would really save me some time if you would just put it on the ballot and stop this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Next up, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Ron Faulkner, 11410 Hillary Court. Good evening. I hadn't planned on this, but here I am. First of all, I want to thank all the people that volunteered their time, because if not for some of these nice folks here, a lot of us wouldn't have known what's going on, because I don't have Facebook. But it's seeing these nice, wonderful, blue shirts out, standing up for the community, the community that brought my wife and I here 24 years ago, the heart of Parker. It was such a special place, such a special place. It was so special to be able to share the fact that we all had a community. It was like a heartbeat going on here and now. It's nothing but contention. And the reason for the contention, I think, is, I'll just leave it for what this presentation is and some of these nice folks have shared, I'm not quite as eloquent as they are. What I can say is, it seems to me, the last several months, my wife and I have never ever had discussions as we have about all the crime in Parker. God love the police, their job is big time ahead of them for what's coming and what's going to continue coming if we continue this growth that we're talking about. What happened to the heart of Parker? That's why we came here, that's why a lot of people came here. I, for one, am just so disgusted by the speed limit on Main Street. It got changed. Was I here to fight it? No, but I'll tell you, I got, it went from, I think, 30 miles an hour to 35 to 40. I'm not sure if that's correct or not, the time sequence, but it's carnage. It's absolute carnage. It's carnage in Raleigh Downs. People are going 50 miles an hour. Imagine Pine and Main Street, when all this development happens. Imagine the carnage, yet alone, I mean, I'm referring to the wildlife, as this one nice lady had put it. We have to think about that. We have to think about what's coming after that. Now it's going to be people next. We have to think about why we're in Parker. I'd share photos of all the deer and the wildlife, like everybody else does. It's going away. We're having deer, it's a bloodbath. It's an absolute bloodbath. What are we going to do when all the traffic increases? We have nothing special to share with anyone anymore. This is becoming Aurora, and we all know it. It's absolutely looking like Aurora. I didn't want to live here. I didn't want to live in Aurora. My wife and I made a purposeful decision to be here because we didn't want that. It's happening. It's already started happening. Please stop it. Please come to your, please come to your senses and listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Albert Thompson, 11198 Cambridge Court. I'm really disappointed to be addressing Mayor and Town Council again on this issue, which I did three years ago as the president of the Raleigh Downs Homeowners Association, a position which I still hold. At that time, we asked that the Pine Curve property not be rezoned commercial. After some contention and quite a few comments in support of not rezoning it commercial, I was authorized by my board to file with the town clerk a Colorado Open Records request for all documents and communications between developers and the town regarding the Pine Curve property. A short time later, about a week, I met with the town clerk. She told me that it would cost about $1,500 to obtain those documents. And I said, "Well, I'll have to go back to my board to get authorization to spend that kind of money." I was greatly relieved to find later the same day that the town council had decided to withdraw the application to rezone that particular property. I've always wondered whether there was some connection between my request for that information and the town's decision not to rezone the property at that time. I think that if the town council really wanted to use that particular property in a way that would be of most benefit to the town, as well as to the immediate residents, they would be looking at some kind of recreational use, some kind of park or civic use, rather than more commercial development, more housing, of which we already have too much at the present time, from all the people that I've talked to recently about what's going on with the town's development. I would ask the town council to take another look at your decision to sell this property. I think it'd be much wiser for you to let that process be decided by the voters, not by this, the five or six of you. I think that you would stand a much better chance of having your request for term limits extended if you were to let the people vote, rather than you override the people and just do what you, what you think is best for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, go ahead and, you got one more? Okay? Oh, yeah, yeah, no worries. I looked over to the on-deck circle, and I didn't see anyone there, so. No, you're good. Omar, could you grab the microphone for and just?
I got it. I'm just going to pull it down, right? Can you hear me okay?
Yep, name and address for the record.
Yep, my name is Nancy Davis. I live at 11241 Parliament Way, Parker, Colorado.
You can move it to the lower.
Yeah, if you want to pull it down lower.
Totally up to you guys. Can you hear me okay?
Whatever's more comfortable for you.
Yeah, I think this is good. All right. All right, so the reason I came, I did not come as prepared as all these wonderful people, and I wanted to thank them, but I am here for the Pine Curve issue because I was born and raised here in Parker. Cheryl, I'm looking at you, I went to school with your son. And I actually was born, my parents are married, on the Me 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 Salon on Main Street, and that's where I was, they were living when I was born. So I feel like a real Parkerite, right? Even, I would tell people that I grew up in the country because my friend brought her llama to show and tell at Pine Lane Elementary when I went there. Okay, so it was the country, is what I felt like I grew up in. And I left here to go to college, and I came back and I felt like I went from the town, the Parker, to the city of Parker. And I understand growth is inevitable in a lot of places, but I also feel like sometimes it's really important for people to hear that these are our homes. These are the places that we grew up, and these are the people that we grew up with. And that I think it's really important to hear that, that a lot of the people who are here today, who are speaking on behalf of this issue, our people are from Raleigh Downs. And Raleigh Downs is right there, where all the traffic would be issues. I can tell you that on a regular basis, there are issues just trying to get to Raleigh Downs now, not if you have all this extra traffic. I don't know what the need is. I don't know all the research. I don't know why you have all decided this is important for us to do, but I do know that there are a lot of people here who think that it's really important that you guys listen to the people, and I really hope that you do. The only other issue, only other thing that I could think of when I was trying to come up with reasons to come up and talk to you guys is Parker Days. Again, I grew up here. Parker Days has been awesome, but I got to tell you, Parker Days has been coming this way. The parking for Parker Days and everything has been coming this way. Even with parking on Pine Curve, we get people in Raleigh Downs every single year that are taking, they're parking there and are, you know, and it just is expanding. So I just don't know where you guys are going to have everybody parked now if you're going to take up all of that space. So those are just some ideas, and I hope you guys hear that this is just me coming from my heart, telling you guys kind of where I'm coming from, so.
Thank you very much. And you know what the good news for you is? You've got two birds with one stone, because Parker Days is not a town event, but Omar right behind you is the chamber representative. It's a chamber event. So you got to hit public comment on two different agencies at one time, so.
Anytime. All right. Well, thank you.
All right, good job, good job. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 8:22. And Council, with your permission, since we've had so much public comment, and we've got a lot of things stalling the agenda, are you guys okay if we skip reports and items from Mayor and Council for just time's sake tonight? Okay, good. Well, let's go ahead and move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. Before you guys, you have Consent Agenda Items 6A through 6H.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pull Item E and Item G from the consent calendar.
We have a motion from Jeff. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Jeff, and we have a second from Cheryl. In just a sec, it's going to take Chris a sec to type it into the computer. You'll get your little screen for the vote. Please vote when it pops up.
You're doing it individually, or you're doing it as a collective?
The vote is to remove those two from the consent agenda, then we'll do.
Both of them, or just one at a time?
Everybody click? Who hasn't clicked? Cheryl or Jeff? I can't tell you your point.
I'm going to press save.
You need me to help you?
Did mine come up because?
Okay, motion fails two to four. So Council, you have, yes?
I'd like to make a motion to pull Item G out of the consent agenda for discussion, please.
We have a motion, we have a motion to remove Item G from Josh. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second. Okay, second from John. We have a motion from Josh, and a second from John for, from which item?
Item G, please.
Item G. As soon as Chris can type that in. Is it not coming on the screen up there?
It is.
I mean, it takes a second for it to pop up. It's not.
They haven't cast their vote yet.
Okay, yeah, after they cast their vote, it pops up up there. Motion passes five to one, so before you guys now, we have now Consent Agenda Items 6A through 6H, with the exception of G, which has been removed from the consent agenda.
Sorry. So I wanted to vote yes and let's pull that off. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to remove Item E from the consent agenda.
And I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Cheryl to remove Item E, and a second by Jeff. That motion fails. So before you, you have Consent Agenda Items 6A through 6H, with the exception of G.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through As, with the exception of G, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh, and a second from Renee. Yep, give him a sec, she's. Her hands don't move as fast as our, there you go. Motion passes with Cheryl and Jeff voting no. So in front of you, you have Consent Agenda Item now 6G.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to call Town Attorney or W. Town Attorney up for clarification on G and what it is we are doing. for clarification on G and what it is we're doing as far as the rights of our citizens.
Good evening, council. Item G is a resolution adopting policy statement 18 concerning public hearing procedure and public comment policy. You currently have a policy 18 concerning public hearing procedure. None of that has changed, and so what is being added to this policy begins on the second page of the policy entitled Public Comment Rules of Participation. In particular, it limits the public comment period, which is the period we just concluded, to the first 30 minutes of the meeting. After that, any additional public comment would occur at the conclusion of the business.
And just general public comment, not hearings?
Just general public comment. This does not have any impact on any items that are set for public hearing, like the annexation we have this evening or the service plans we have this evening. Those public comments to those items can go on as long as necessary to receive all the public comment for those action items on the agenda. It will require people that want to speak to sign up, and you will determine the order with residents being given priority to speak during that 30-minute period. There are also additional provisions in there about, you know, not making threats or intimidating remarks, for not blocking the aisles, for not holding signs that block people's views, things of that nature, just to ensure that this is a business meeting and you're here to conduct the town's business, and that can be done in an efficient and productive manner.
Okay. If I could, so public comment is for items not on the agenda, and no action will be taken on public comment items, correct?
Correct, that's your current.
So the misconception, if you will, that we are not allowing people to speak before there are votes is not applicable, because items that are brought up in public comment do not have anything on the agenda, correct? They do not pertain to anything on the agenda, or if they do, it's coincidental, because we can't speak to things in public comment. For what reason? Why can't we speak to things that are brought up in public comment? As far as the posting goes? If somebody brings up...
Because they're not posted on the agenda. We are required under the open meetings law to post an agenda with the items that you are going to be taking action on 24 hours in advance, and so if someone comes up and brings up an item that hasn't been posted, and so you don't take action on items that might be brought up in public comment.
So then, anything that is brought up in public comment is not... Doesn't pertain to a vote that evening, so we're not denying anybody's right to speak to that vote. If there's something that is pertaining to a vote, they're giving it their own public comment at the end of that hearing, or during the middle of that hearing, correct?
Correct. They're set for a public hearing later in the agenda. Additionally, I will say there are multiple avenues for the citizens to converse with you through email, through social media, through meeting with you, so there are other ways for them to also communicate with you prior to a meeting in between the time that an agenda item is posted last week until tonight.
Thank you. Just in my own point, I think I know very well what it says on the side of this building, and we are people, believe it or not, we do live here. It is not my desire to limit anybody's voice ever in this room. It is my desire to get to business first, business that is on the agenda, because there are people that are here for the business. If public comment extends into the later hours, then that business and those staff members and those folks that are presenting business in front of this council are here also. So I think to getting to public comment, get the first 10. If there's more, then we can speak to them afterwards. And I'm wearing... I'll sit here all morning. I have done it. I will sit here until you have all said your piece. That is my job. That is what I signed up for, whoever said that earlier. So we are never looking to limit. We're just looking to make this more convenient for everybody that's at these hearings, and not those that are bringing us public comments right away. That's my opinion.
So you guys have in front of you consent agenda item 6G.
Hey, Mike.
Jeff.
Kristin, who does something like this, and why would we consider something like this?
So the town of Castle Rock has a very similar procedure. I've also run into it, actually testified before Denver Public Schools. They limit the number of speakers. Those are the two examples I have.
Okay.
They're big cities.
Okay, you have before you consent agenda 6G.
Mr. Mayor, just an observation. This is an awful lot of discussion over something that's deemed to be routine. Just an observation.
Okay.
Mike.
Debbie.
I think part of the problem may be confusion of semantics. Public hearing, consent agenda, when you have items that are part of the public hearing, it gets confused with public testimony in that three-minute time drill. When we go to what we call public hearings, that's when you can talk for five hours if someone said if so, but it's confusing the terminology that is used, I think, for people that have not done this for a long period of time. You're going, "Well, am I giving public comment here, or am I giving it public comment over there?" And that's a difference. The three-minute drill is something that can only be, that's not already on, the public hearing component, because no one else except the person that came here to make that comment and the rest of the town knows. But it is a confusing terminology, if you're not accustomed to it, when you've got public hearing and public comments.
There is nothing confusing about this issue. This issue is designed to cut off public comment, period. You have issues that come up under resolutions, which allow for no public comment, unless they use the public comment session to do that. And if you're limiting conversations or comments from the public, you are limiting their ability to state their point of view. I do not think we need to put a limit on their points of view, period.
Okay, thank you very much. So council, before you, you have consent agenda item 6G.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda item 6G, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Renee. Motion passes with four yes and two no. The two no were Cheryl Pogue and Jeff Toborg. Next item up on our agenda is item number seven. This is public hearings. First one is public hearing A, which is the KOA Enclave Property Annexation and Zoning. Council, there are three parts to this, so I'm gonna go ahead and read in all three parts for you before we get started. You guys are more than welcome to stay and hear the annexation hearing, see how it goes through, if you'd like. So we've got A1, which is resolution number 19-053. This is a resolution to establish the town council's finding of fact and conclusions therein concerning the KOA Enclave Property Annexation. Item A2 is ordinance number 2.267 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory known as the KOA Enclave Property in Douglas County. And item three is ordinance number 3.346 on second reading, which is a bill for an ordinance zoning certain property within the town of Parker, Colorado, known as the KOA Enclave Property, to A Agriculture District pursuant to the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance, and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. So Stacy, you're gonna rock and roll as our leader tonight.
All right, well, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. This is the proposed annexation and zoning of the 57-acre KOA property into the town of Parker, and to zone the property agricultural. So the subject property, known as the KOA property, is located in unincorporated Douglas County and is surrounded by the town of Parker. The KOA property is located on the west side of Parker Road, south of 20 Mile Road, and between the Flat Acres Shopping Center and McCabe Meadows Trailhead.
Stacy, actually, could you hold on? Just run quick. Who's our officer in the back there? Do you mind popping the door? We can't hear her speaking with...
Sorry.
Yeah, no, you're good. Stacy, go ahead.
All right, so it's located west of Parker Road, south of the 20 Mile, or Flat Acres Shopping Center, and then north of McCabe Meadows Trailhead. The subject property is approximately 57 acres in size and is owned by Vertical Bridge, which is formerly known as iHeart Media. The town is processing an enclave annexation of the KOA property and will zone the property A Agriculture, which is the town zoning most similar to the existing county zoning. The KOA property has been completely surrounded by the town of Parker for a period of not less than three years, and is considered an enclave under the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965. The town is committed to a policy of actively pursuing the annexation of enclaves. The subject property is located within the town's planning area described in the Parker 2035 Master Plan. So the general land use map within the Parker 2035 Master Plan identifies this property as being within the medium-density residential character area. The medium-density residential designation recommends residential development with an overall growth density of up to three and a half dwelling units per acre. The subject property is part of an enclave annexation where the proposed zoning is consistent with the property's current Douglas County zoning. The subject property is located along Parker Road, surrounded by properties within the town boundaries, and located within the town's growth boundary. The A Agricultural District allows for residential land uses at a density below the maximum density recommended by the Parker 2035 Master Plan. The annexation and zoning fulfills the town of Parker's goal of actively pursuing annexation of enclaves and roads to allow for continuity of services within the Parker 2035 planning So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. The project will not result in any additional municipal service costs. The project satisfies the nine criteria required in the Land Development Ordinance to rezone the property. All referral agencies have been addressed, and the Planning Commission heard this request on July 11, 2019, and recommended unanimous approval. With that, staff recommends the town council approve the KOA Enclave Annexation and Zoning. This concludes staff presentation, and I'm available for any comments you may have.
Council, do you have any questions for Stacy?
No.
Looking both sides, I'm not seeing anyone? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 8:38 PM if there's anyone here wishing to address council on the KOA Enclave Property Annexation and Zoning. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:39 PM, and I would entertain further discussion or three separate motions, since there's three different items have to be handled one at a time.
If I could, Stacy, this property, it lies in unincorporated Douglas County now, and the building restrictions in unincorporated Douglas County are not the same as the building restrictions in the town of Parker, correct?
So it's zoned agricultural in the unincorporated Douglas County right now. Their building restrictions are similar. I can't say if they're exactly the same, but it is... The density of number of units is very similar.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other questions? Then I would entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve resolution number 19-053, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh, and a second by Debbie. Cheryl, did you have any... Were you seconding it, or did you have something?
I was just trying to go to second.
Okay, we'll get you on the next one. We got motion by Josh, and a second by Debbie. Motion passes unanimously. The next motion we'll need is for A2.
I move to approve ordinance number 2.267 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh, and a second by Debbie. Council, please vote in just a sec. Motion passes unanimously, and then the third item is A3.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.346 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh, and a second by Debbie. Cheryl?
I did.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item B. Now, guys, you're gonna have to listen to me talk for a long time here. We've got 10 items on it. So let me go through. This is Hess Ranch Metropolitan Districts numbers four through eight. Kristin's gonna be the leader here in just a sec, but I was gonna try to do it all in one breath. I don't think I'm gonna be able to do it. B1, resolution number 19-054, which is a resolution to approve the amended and restated service plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number four. B2 is resolution number 19-055, is a resolution to approve the amended and restated service plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number five. B3 is resolution number 19-056, which is a resolution to approve the amended and restated service plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number six. B4 is resolution number 19-057, which is a resolution to approve the amended and restated service plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number seven. Item B5 is resolution number 19-058, which is a resolution to approve the amended and restated service plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number eight. Number B6, or item B6, is ordinance number 9.294 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement by and between the town of Parker, Colorado, and Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number four. B7 is ordinance number 9.295 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement by and between the town of Parker, Colorado, and Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number five. Item B8, which is ordinance number 9.296 on second reading, this is a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement by and between the town of Parker, Colorado, and Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number six. B9 is ordinance number 9.297 on second reading, this is a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement by and between the town of Parker, Colorado, and Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number seven. Last but not least is B10, which is ordinance number 9.298 on second reading, which is a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement by and between the town of Parker, Colorado, and Hess Ranch Metropolitan District number eight. Please don't make me read those again.
I will not. Thank you, mayor and council.
Do you read number six again?
Right, number six. I gotta...
In September 2015, the town council approved a consolidated service plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan Districts numbers one through eight. At that time, it was anticipated that the Hess Ranch districts would collectively undertake the financing and construction of the public improvements, but as a result of the sale of approximately 400 acres of land within the original service plan area, there is now a diversity of property ownership in the Hess districts, with an entity called Gen Colorado 18 LLC owning approximately 1,136 acres of land, and the 400 that were sold are owned by an entity called HR 935. As a result of this diversity of ownership, they decided to divide the districts and have the development occur at different times. So the Hess Ranch districts decided that districts one through three will serve the HR 935 property, and districts numbers four through eight that you're considering tonight will serve the larger Gen property. Last month, the town council approved amended and restated service plans and amended and restated IGAs for districts numbers one through three, and tonight you're considering amended and restated service plans for districts four through eight, as well as amended and restated IGAs. The applications have been administratively reviewed by town staff as required by the Parker Municipal Code, and a comprehensive analysis is contained in the staff report. The proposed service plans and IGAs substantially comply with the forms that were approved by the town council in May 2019 under your new Metro District policies. Here tonight is Tom George from the law firm Spencer Fain, and he does have a presentation to take you through the details of the service plans and IGAs.
Okay. Tom, before you get started, but while you're walking down, council, do you have any questions for Kristin before Tom gives his presentation? Cheryl?
Okay, Kristin, previously, there was a 30-year limit on the bonded issues that they would put out. Has that changed? Because I'm hearing 40 at times, but I don't see 40 in this particular document.
I believe it's 40, but while they're giving their presentation, I'll look and find that in the...
Yeah, because here under debt limit, it talks about a 30-year limit, but I had heard 40, so I wanted that verified.
Okay, I'll check while he's giving his presentation.
Okay, other questions, council? All right, Tom.
Thank you, mayor and council. Good evening. I'd like to start by quickly saying thank you, especially to town staff. Kristin Schleodorn and Monica Rosenbluth, your special counsel. I've done a wonderful job. Been wonderful to work with, so thank you. We do have a presentation that Kristin is gonna pull that up.
And if not, that's okay. I can still walk through.
They're working. We'll get it.
How do I do it?
You can say, "Close your eyes and imagine."
I do have hard copies for council, if that's necessary.
Give us a second.
Whisper click.
Whisper click. Yeah, whisper click. We were... Tonight's presentation will be through interpretive dance.
I'd like to introduce the board president.
Exactly.
Larry Jacobson is here.
Larry Jacobson is here.
You have Larry and Matt there, come on.
I think interpretive dance would be a very good option.
At this point, I think so.
I will introduce myself, I guess I can start there. I'm Tom George, an attorney of Spencer Fain.
There it is.
LP, address is 1700 Lincoln Street, Suite 2000, Denver, Colorado. With me tonight also are two of our board members, board president Larry Jacobson, and also Matt Osborne.
Perfect.
I have just a quick presentation for you to add a little bit to what Kristin already presented on. If we could go to the next slide quickly, it's just a vicinity map for you to get your bearings. The next one, please, Kristin, is a few background items. As Kristin pointed out, Hess Ranch Metropolitan Districts numbers 1 through 8 were created together under a consolidated service plan in September of 2015. The property is now owned by two different owners, 1 through 3 and 4 through 8, being owned by different entities. Town council approved your model service plan in May of this year as part of your new policy. You approved separate amended and restated service plans for each of Hess Ranch Metro Districts 1 through 3 earlier this summer. And tonight, you're looking at Hess Ranch 4 through 8, which will serve the Looking Glass development. Go to the next slide, please. This table is a simple side-by-side comparison of the consolidated service plan, being that service plan that governed 1 through 8, amended service plans being what is for you tonight. I want to just point out particularly the mill levies on the far-right column. This is to comply directly with the model service plan as approved by this council. Next slide, please, Kristin. I want to also just touch on the two new mill levies as part of your model service plan, the infrastructure capital mill levy. The purpose of this is to support the planning, design, financing, acquisition, and/or construction of regional infrastructure, including regional stormwater improvements, such as Lemon Gulch and Lemon Gold's Tributary, arterial streets such as South Chambers Road and Stro Road, regional water and sanitary sewer improvements, and regional open space, trails, and other regional park and recreation improvements. Next, please, Kristin. The use of the town capital and maintenance mill levy is to fund capital costs or the cost of maintenance of town infrastructure that is necessary in connection with the impacts of development in the districts, including maintenance and operation of all roadways, storm sewer, and associated items constructed within town right-of-way; maintenance operation of regional roadways serving the district; maintenance and operation of all storm sewer detention ponds; stream improvements, other stormwater conveyance infrastructure located on town, HOA, or district-owned property that is eligible for maintenance through the town's stormwater utility enterprise... Sorry, town's stormwater utility, and widening of South Chambers Road to a full arterial roadway section through the boundaries of the districts. Next, please, Kristin. The benefits of the amended service plans primarily are these, that the consolidated service plan currently governs districts 1 through 8. It does not adequately address the development within the proposed development of Looking Glass, because it governs all of 1 through 8 and not just 4 through 8. The amended service plans are in compliance with your model service plan adopted as part of your policy this summer. Each of these districts will agree to impose a property tax of five mills that will be used for the planning, design, and construction of regional infrastructure. And will also agree to impose the property tax of five mills that will be used for the planning, design, construction, and/or maintenance of town infrastructure. Next, please, Kristin. And these four findings we put in front of you today just as a reminder of the statutory findings before counsel today. I don't need to read them, I think you're familiar with them through all your work on your policy. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. We are here to answer any questions you might have.
Fantastic. Counsel, do you have any questions for Tom?
No, I appreciate the work you've done. I appreciate the dedication, again, I'll say it again, to the dendritic development. I truly, truly appreciate you guys leading the way with that. And more importantly, I wish the room would have stayed full because I appreciate growth paying for growth. And thank you for working this out with us. And again, thank you for your dedication, both to our town and to a quality development in our town.
Other questions?
Kudos to you all, again.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Tom. We'll go ahead, Kristin?
To answer Councilmember Pogue's question, in the service plan under Section 6, it's on page 146D, the maximum debt mill levy imposition term is 40 years. And that's unless a majority of the board of the district or residents of the district have voted in favor of a refunding of part or all of the debt. And such refunding will result in a net present value savings. But it's 40 years.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:51 PM. All right, who's coming up for public comment? Oh, seriously, I totally thought you were coming down. That was the, that was, did you guys notice the timing of it? He's the only one who moved. You're moving too. See, there is no adjusting or moving when it's public comment time. It's like an auction, yeah. Tom Barr's going to come in, it's like an auction. You just bought yourselves a Rolls Royce because you lifted your hand at the right time. Thanks for it. All right, I truly don't see any public comments because there's not a whole lot of public here. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment at 8:52 PM. Entertain further discussion, or you guys have 10 items that will require 10 different motions. I do, on behalf of Chris and Carol, will ask that you do it as slow as you can because there's 10 of them and they have to reset between each one.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-054.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. No one's here to hear my voices tonight, so I'll have to go with something good. Do some Scottish. I just got done with my New York accent and... Forget about it. Everyone vote? Who are we waiting on? Cheryl?
Well, probably me, because I was looking at it over here.
Motion passes 5 to 1 with Cheryl Pogue as the one no vote. Next item is number 2.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-055.
Second.
That's a motion from Renee and a second from Josh. Helps spread the time out so they can... Please vote. Motion passes 5 to 1 with Cheryl Pogue being the one no vote. Next item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-056.
Second.
We have a motion by Debbie and a second by Renee. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 1 with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item is number 4.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-057.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 1 with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item, number 5.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-058, please.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Un momento, and counsel, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 1 with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item is number 6.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 9.294 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Debbie and a second by John. Please vote. Motion passes 5 to 1 with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item is number 7.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 9.295 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Renee and a second by Debbie. Please vote. Motion passes 5 to 1 with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item is number 8.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 9.296 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by John, and that would be a second by Debbie.
Come on, Jeff, get in there.
These lights in your voice, I'm just ready to...
I haven't done anything good tonight. Trying to keep it... I'll do a WKRP instance in a minute. Motion passes 5 to 1 with Cheryl Pogue being the one no vote. Next item, number 9.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 9.297 on second reading.
Second.
That would be a motion by Josh Rivera and a second by Renee Williams. Coming at you. Motion passes 5 to 1 with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. And the last item, number 10.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 9.298 on second reading.
Jump in there. Second.
Motion by Debbie and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 1 with one no vote by Cheryl Pogue. With no further business before counsel, we will adjourn at 8:58 PM. Woo!